Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody. December is upon us, as is the cold, like it or not. I do not have a report tonight, so we're going to go to public participation. Is anyone here for public participation? Hearing none. No one signed up?
No one signed up.
We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes? Including the corrected ones? No? How about warrants and wires? Dennis got in touch with you earlier, I heard?
I did talk to him.
Okay. He won't miss that. Joe, we have a notification of a hire in retirements.
Yes, we're really happy to welcome Julia Roashkine to Stepney Elementary School for Special Education. We had hired someone earlier who ended up backing out at the last minute, so this was a replacement for that position. So, we're happy to have Julia on board.
Nice. And retirements?
And Kelly, I think Kelly's here.
Yep.
Kelly and Ashley are going to be really busy next year, and probably lead to before this is all said and done. So we're up to seven retirements right now, six of them at the elementary school level. Really happy for these folks who are going to be retiring with us at the end of this year. But Gretchen Conti is the only one at Jackie Hollow. Then we have Janet Densky and Leslie Sikelsky at Monroeal, and Patty Sudo, Reading Specialist over at Stepney Elementary. So, take the date right now, Monroeal is in the lead with four retirees, so it's going to be a busy spring for Kelly.
She can handle it. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve as presented? Jerry, seconded by Christine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Reports of the committees. Students, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone.
I hope we're all having a marvelous Monday. Today marked the first day back from our long-awaited Thanksgiving break. For most students, this meant a long weekend of rest, relaxation, and eating. But for two Massey musicians, seniors Samantha Daverin and Allison Merriman, it was a working break. These two students had the honor of performing at the Macy's Thanksgiving Parade in New York City as part of the Great American Marching Band, and we are all very proud of them. The next three weeks are the sometimes dreaded, sometimes awaited winter weeks before winter break. We're at the final stretch of the calendar year, and I personally am looking forward to the end of college application season as a senior.
The next two weeks, the Massey Music Department will hold their annual winter conference.
You might just shut it off.
My gosh, what happened? Then we'll perform Tuesday, December 10th, chorus two days later on the 12th, and orchestra the next week on the 19th. We hope for a big crowd to support our performers. For news in perhaps the complete opposite department, Massey Robotics will have a busy two weeks. This weekend, four teams will be heading to the Wave Signature Event at Worcester Polytechnic Institute in Massachusetts. The next weekend will be the long-awaited home competition right here at Massey, which occurs every December. We wish our teams luck and hope you'll all come out to cheer them on. As an orchestra and robotics member, I'll definitely have no rest until Christmas break.
The spring musical was finally announced after this year's very successful drama, Your Only Young Ones. The department will have auditions for Cinderella on Monday, December 16th. We are also hosting the eighth grade open house this Wednesday. We are very excited to introduce the new incoming freshmen and their parents to our school. As fall sports have come to an end, the only update I have for you today is on Massey's football game against Newtown. Despite our team's hard work, we unfortunately lost 18 to 35. On the bright side, today was the official start of the winter sports season, so we are looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, any committee reports?
We met with policy tonight, so we have some updates.
Coming up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that it?
CES has the legislative breakfast on Friday morning, so just a reminder, I'm going. I don't know if you're going, Joe.
I'm going, yes.
And Dennis mentioned CES has regional transportation now for spec ed? Jen, have you heard anything about that?
I don't believe so.
No?
That's not true.
Okay. He read it somewhere, so maybe...
He might be talking about it.
Oh, okay. Maybe that's what it is then. Okay, okay.
It is. Man's used to have that.
Yes.
They did.
And I think they still do. They just don't service as many.
Right.
Do they get their audiologist?
No. Not that I know of. There are not many out there, I believe.
Yes. Okay. Report of the chair. Joe?
Well, I'm the superintendent. You're the chair.
Oh, reporter of the superintendent. I didn't have a report tonight. We have the wrong glasses.
I'm going to have Jen kick it off with this special education update.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So, just starting with our enrollment. We didn't have any students move into district in the month of November. We had one student who was dismissed from services, and we had 11 students made eligible. Six of those 11 students were preschool students. So we're pretty on track where we were last year at this time. Last November, we had four students that were identified. This November, we had five. So that's pretty similar. We are at 640 right now, which is actually the highest we've ever been. And just to correct the record from last time, Dennis was accurate. We were, 630 was the highest we'd ever been, and I had the wrong number in my head prior. But we are at 640 at this time, so that is the highest we've ever been historically.
We're at 625 at the end of last year.
625, yes. I was thinking 635, so that's where we are. So if you look at our financials, our spending in tuition public line has increased by $2,500. If you, that's on page one. If you also look on page one, our spending in tuition private has gone up significantly. It's gone up by $266,000. That is because there are three students that we are placing at this time. And I had said prior, at our prior meetings the past couple of months, that those were going to be complex programs that we were looking for for kids, and it was going to take a bit of time. So, we've placed a couple of those students, so we still have one more to go. But that's where we are, and why you see that significant jump from last month. Our system-wide transportation line showing a credit of $16,000. That's just due to student programming changes, so that's a little bit of a credit to help offset. And that's really where we are right now. We'll get our first installment of excess cost mid-January to end of January, so that will help offset some of the spending, but that's where we are right now. Questions?
You know, because of the size of Monroeal, it's probably a little tricky, but has there been any discussion with regards to having more programming in district for complex learners?
So we'd love to have a therapeutic day program in district for our students. That would be amazing. So I think that I am on the ad hoc committee for the facility studies, so we're looking at that possibly, but it's going to be a little, we don't have space for it right now. So it's something that we definitely would want to look into, and Marissa and I have been talking about it for quite a while, so.
Because I know a lot of districts are doing that.
Saves a lot of money. It's something we could definitely do and do well in districts, just that we need the space.
Yeah, it saves a lot of money, and you're putting highly qualified special education teachers in front of the students.
Correct. Any other questions?
No?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. I just wanted to give a quick update, too. I want to thank Paul for his continued work to enhance security in all of our buildings. Paul's talked about this in the past. He's been gradually working to upgrade the camera system throughout the district. The necessity of this work became even more apparent after the swatting incident earlier this year. I'm also very appreciative to the Board of Finance as well for reallocating funds that were designated to cover purchases in fiscal year 2023. That year, we were able to cover purchases, mostly laptops and Chromebooks, with end-of-year surplus funds. So the Board of Finance, not, obviously not this past Thursday, but the Thursday before, re-appropriated the use of those funds, about $160,000, to cover the cost of a camera upgrade at Massey. And I would love to regale you with stories of fiber and whatnot, but I figured I'd leave the details to Paul.
I'm not sure they want to hear stories of fiber either. Good evening, everyone. Yes, so as Joe mentioned, the Board of Finance reallocated $162,000 that was earmarked for capital expenditures that were picked off with some surplus. So that money had been allocated for technology projects, but there wasn't a need for the Chromebooks at this point. So Mr. Bonowski reached out to me, and the pressing need, obviously, is the cameras here at Massey. This system is well over a decade old, and we're in a situation where the version of the platform that we are on is too old to add cameras. So I can't even add an additional camera, because that would require a license. But you can't buy a license, because the version is too old. So, it's basically an all-or-nothing. Now, my plan was, because again, not having this much money available at the time, was to do a dual system, where we would start slowly adding more cameras in a new system and start migrating cameras over to a newer system. That would take a lot of time, and obviously a lot of energy. So, to be able to pick this off in one shot is just huge. Part of this project is also going to upgrade the fiber interlinks between our wiring closets here at the high school, which will serve increased capacity for, obviously, we're going to be adding a lot of cameras. So there'll be increased bandwidth for that, as well as just network traffic overall. So as we move more to the one-to-one initiative, there's going to be a lot of mobile devices, so this will help support that.
That's great. Any questions for Paul? No? Thank you, Board of Finance, for that.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You're good. Any questions for Joe? Okay, we're going to move along to a math presentation.
You got it.
Kevin?
At the meeting in November, the assessment meeting in November, we talked a lot about, you know, sometimes we use acronyms, IM and BTC. And IM is illustrative math. BTC is building thinking classrooms. Those are curricular resources and support and instructional approaches that we talked about a lot then. And I know the question came up at least once during that meeting, well, what's the difference between, you know, illustrative math and, you know, other stuff before? And I had asked Kevin and Evelyn Chivory to come up and talk a little bit about these new curricular resources and instructional approaches to see how it's different. You know, life in the math classroom is much different than when we were in school, where you kind of came into the class, you started doing your homework, or you, I'm sorry. The teacher went over the homework, and then, you know, the teacher then gave you some new work to do, and then we all did that work kind of together, and then the teacher gave you some independent time to start doing that homework on your own, and then you went home and did it. The way we approach math is much different now, reflects a lot of the changes that we'll see in the SBAK and whatnot. So, as Kevin and, originally, we're going to make this interactive, and we're going to put you guys in groups and make you do this problem. But as Kevin and Evelyn make their way up there, I just want you to take a quick look at this problem behind it, because it's indicative of some of the work that is asked of kids now. And it's a very different way of thinking about math and how we approach it. And so what I'd ask you to do is, as you look at that, and Kevin and Evelyn will address it in a few minutes, just think about, how would you approach answering this question? So you have these, you get eight tires. You can make bicycles, unicycles, tricycles. They're all supposed to be the same-sized tire, so how many variations of each thing could you do with eight tires? So think about how you might start to, you know, figure that out in your head. Are you coming up with an algorithm in your head? Or you have a chart in your head? You're starting to draw pictures? You're drawing pictures. That's a fine strategy. So go ahead, guys.
They'll be tested yet.
Yeah, how much time should we give them?
Do we get manipulatives?
All right. So while we're going through the presentation, feel free to continue to think about this, because we will come back to it. As we mentioned before, as Joe mentioned before, math was taught very differently, even when I was a kid. And so, traditional classrooms, the teachers were up at the front of the room. Kids were sitting in rows. They were sitting nicely and quietly. They were only speaking when called upon. And this design of learning, while it worked then, times have changed pretty rapidly. And so, what research has found is that this design of learning now, in 2024, actually helps kids become very anonymous in their own classroom. It makes it very easy for kids to hide, to pretend, to fake it. As a teacher goes over a particular algorithm of some kind, they're following the steps and mimicking those steps. And then as soon as they get a problem that is even slightly different from the modeled approach, they're stuck. And in that approach, when kids get stuck, they give up. Our goal is for kids to be enjoying math and building a math identity where they feel comfortable and successful doing math. And I will, every time I look at this, I admit wholeheartedly to being a fake reader when I was in elementary school. So I'm sure you can imagine back when you were in school as well, times where you didn't really feel like doing the work, or you didn't really want to ask for help. This classroom design was, is very helpful for kids who don't really want to put in that extra effort. So, as I mentioned before, in these particular teaching designs, you are learning one algorithm, right? There's one way to solve a problem, typically the most efficient way. With math now, we are learning the same math. It's not new math. But there are alternative strategies to finding the answer. And so what's really nice about this, let me see if I can get this. Yeah, there it is. All three of these methods, the standard algorithm, which is what you are most accustomed to, the area model and partial products, are now taught. And so, both of these methods build conceptual understanding for students to then understand that the procedure, the most efficient procedure in math, this is why it works. And so students are really choosing what algorithm or alternative algorithm works best for them and builds their conceptual understanding to that most efficient strategy. So going back to the bicycle problem. These are all examples of how other adults and children have solved this problem. Joe and Sheila actually solved it themselves not too long ago. I think that was last week. So what you'll see here is there's plenty of people who think a little bit differently and started drawing pictures. You'll also see some people who were using charts to try to organize their thinking. Over here, people were using numbers and letters to symbolize some of the different representations. And then you had a few people who got into some math. And what's interesting about this is that everyone came in with a different approach, still found all the combinations. And the idea behind this is to then synthesize the thinking. It allows kids to jump in with their own background knowledge, using their own thinking, come up with the answer, and then learn from one another. So, for example, a lot of people who drew pictures, once they recognized that they could have made a chart, immediately they knew, oh, I could have organized that a lot easier. So they're learning from each other, that knowledge mobility. So the question that was asked last time we were here was, what makes IM different from other curricular resources? Most curricular resources are content-based, and yes, IM is also content-based. But it also focuses on developing learning communities. And so, one of the more challenging aspects to picking a math curriculum that fits the vision of a graduate is that empathy and compassion, social emotional, social emotional learning. And so, because IM focuses on developing these learning communities where students are working together, collaborating, sharing their thinking, defending and justifying their reasonings, learning to value mistakes as learning opportunities, all of these things are really helpful for building off our vision of a graduate. Most curricular resources do not have that. IM also sparks discussion, perseverance, and enjoyment of math. So most traditional resources, the teacher is doing the math, and there's only one way to do it. Lots of times, if you think back to your own experiences in math, lots of people, I hear people say, oh, I'm not a math person. Well, if you're a person and you do math, you're a math person. And IM really facilitates the idea that no matter what you feel your skill level is, you are a math person. It's a problem-based curriculum, so everybody has an access point to dive in, and the teachers become the facilitators of that learning through questioning, thinking tasks, and then synthesizing during that direct instruction. Also, most curricular resources don't provide a warm-up structure or any type of formative assessment at the end of a lesson. Formative assessment being like a quick exit ticket, or a quick one problem to, let the teacher collect some data to see how students did on the lesson and help them drive their instruction for the next day. IM provides both of those things. Typically, in, you know, your traditional classroom setting, the teacher is doing a mini lesson that exposes them to new content. The teacher then models a procedure, and then the students follow that procedure. In IM, it's kind of reversed, where the teacher is providing a thinking task. The kids are hands-on in real-world connected activities, using instructional routines, talking together, discovering, exploring, building upon past learning. And then at the end, the teacher is then consolidating that learning and providing a direct instruction based on the misconceptions that they saw. So what makes IM different from other curricular resources? It's very intentional. It has a unique scope and sequence, and the content builds. The content isn't isolated. And so Kevin and I are going to share a quick example of what that means. My example comes from fourth grade. Most traditional math curriculums start Unit 1 with place value. I can't think of a single curriculum that doesn't start with place value, except for IM. IM intentionally puts data or measurement or geometry as one of the leading units of study, because that content then builds, and kids can connect back to it, rather than teaching it in isolation towards the end of the school year when they're already in the midst of their SBA testing. So in fourth grade, IM starts with factors and multiples. And most teachers at first thought, this is crazy. Why are we starting with this? And as they went through IM a little bit out of time last year, what they discovered was that in order to create equivalent fractions in Unit 2, students needed factors and multiples. And so, every unit, that foundation is supporting the learning throughout the year, rather than starting with place value, jumping to something different, and then jumping to factors and multiples and saying, yeah, hey, we did factors and multiples back when we did equivalent fractions, but you didn't know it then. It's a very intentional sequence, and it makes it very unique to IM. Kevin?
The eighth grade example, I actually witnessed in an eighth grade class where they're teaching, and excuse my voice, by the way, I apologize, but I got a cold for Thanksgiving. But I was in an eighth grade class, and they were teaching the concept of slope. And with it, they were talking about, you know, going up and down the line, there are congruent triangles can be formed. And one of the students was like, oh, you mean when we did the thing with the parallel lines cut by a line, and we had congruent angles up and down that line? That's what led, and so to see this connection between a unit they did prior, and then how that built up and to understand the concept of slope. You know, in the past, it would be, you know, you'd do an isolated unit, isolated unit, isolated unit. But this had a nice thread where it started with transformation of figures that you moved around a graph into similar triangles, into these parallel lines cut by a transversal, leading right into slope. And you could see that line straight through, and how it built into that concept of slope, which is so important as you move forward into high school mathematics. And to see that, and see the girl's face light up as she made that connection, was, I was like, it was great. It was great to see. So that's really, you know, what we see in this type of curricular resources, how that builds upon itself, and it builds and builds, and the students see that connection as they go throughout the year.
So just as Kevin mentioned, not only is there a through line throughout a grade-level curriculum, but there's a through line through every single lesson within IM. So this is an example of the structure of an IM lesson. K8 starts with a warm-up, which really prepares students for the lesson. And it's what we call like a high ceiling, low floor question, where really anyone can jump in. It's an access point for everybody. Then there are two activities, a lesson synthesis, where some of that direct instruction is taking place. And then a cooldown, that formative assessment piece. And K5, using some centers for some fluency support and additional practice.
At the middle school, we have 43-minute periods. So our teachers need to make that decision between Activity 1 and 2, which one we figure is more valuable for that particular lesson, so it fits within the time constraints of our periods. But the nice thing is, if, you know, during pause, if you want additional work, the teacher has that other activity available that they could then go back to and discuss to try to make that connection with the students. But it's just a modification we make. The middle school, based on the fact our periods don't fit like the 60 minutes that is, that could be needed for, to do all of this from warm-up to cooldown.
And the same goes for elementary. We work very hard to try to select the activity that's going to give us the most bang for our buck, that's the most aligned with the cooldown, because the cooldown is tied to the standard. And so, oftentimes in the elementary level, we'll select one of those two activities to give ourselves a little bit more time for centers, which is very interactive, building fluency, and giving students additional practice with the skill. Here, we're going to show you two questions. One of them is from IM, and I know, I'm sorry that it's hard to read. And one of them is from an SBA IAB assessment. Can you tell which is which? It's okay if you can't. That's the point. IM is very well, all of the assessments, even the cooldowns, are very well-aligned to SBA-type questions. So, students are actually getting SBA practice on a daily basis, because they are doing problem-solving, and the questions, the vocabulary, the setup of the questions are all very similar to SBA.
And then this is also a seventh-grade example. The one on the top is an SBA example from an IAB, and the one at the bottom is an assessment question from a seventh-grade unit. And again, it's very similar. Of anything, I'd look at the second one from IM, and that's actually working with more challenging fractions, 5 and 5/8s were, you know, as opposed to 1 and 4/10 and 1 half. And we talked previous meeting about, we're trying to expose them to both types of questions, because there are some minor differences between the two and how they're being asked. So, you know, one is to enter the number of cups of pretzels. The other one says, how many cups fill each bottle? There's that slight differences that we try to expose to them, not only from the IM assessments, but also the SBA IABs, so that students see how, they are very similar in the types of questions, and just see how they're worded.
So, what makes IM different from other curricular resources? Just as a recap, we are developing learning communities where kids are building their math identity, being confident in doing math. There is so much student discourse, students that are persevering and seeing the value in making a mistake, seeing it as a learning opportunity, and really enjoying math. It's very hands-on. IM is, has a very intentional lesson design that promotes growth. There's real-world applications, a strong SBA alignment. And what Kevin is going to jump into next is how easily connected IM structure is to the Building Thinking Classroom practices.
Thank you. Several teachers in the district are reading a book called Building Thinking Classroom Mathematics, and it's a K-12 book, and it's 14 strategies that teachers can use in the classroom. to make students' thinking visible. It shows, it allows students to be more actively engaged in the lesson, and then also to collaborate, and then also to then have teachers, you know, intervene when needed based on what they see. And so I'm going to talk about these strategies and how we use them in the, in our classes. So it's broken up into four toolkits. So the first one, and for many teachers, when they dove into the book, it really was, "Hey, if you could even master the first three, you'll see a change in your classroom." Students will be more actively engaged, they won't be hiding, and they really, really get an understanding of what, what the students would know. So what are they? Well, it's using a thinking task. And this is an example here, and it's hard to read up here, but really talks about Karen and Kara are 24 miles apart from each other. They leave their house heading towards each other. And the question is, after 1 hour, 2 hours, 3 hours, you know, how far away are they? So think about the question back in the day that we all laughed like, "Oh, a train leaves from one station, and the other train leaves another station." So the content's not changing. It's the same exact type question, and this happened to be a 6th grade class just the other day. But it's, how are you presenting that question? How are you allowing kids to think about that question? And how are they demonstrating their understanding of that type of question? And part of it is, not only do you have this good thinking task, you start using what's called visible random grouping. So if you look to the left, this is a door from one of 6th grade teachers. He has a set of cards lined up, and it's a routine now where the kids come in, they pick a card. And then they all find each other and have the same card, and that's their group for the day. And it changes from day to day depending on the activity, and it gets kids to work with other kids in the classroom. It's not always the same group, it could be anyone in the classroom at any given time. And then, the third part is, now having them do their work and showing their work on, on vertical, non-permanent surfaces. And we've purchased many whiteboards, about 2 feet by 3 feet, and put them around the classroom so they can go spread out and work in these groups on these activities. And then it allows you as a teacher to really look around and see their work. Think in the past, as they're working at their desks, you'd have to go from desk to desk to really kind of lean over. Now, you know, you can step back and take a look around. And another example is, I was in a high school class, this was last year, and they were given an assignment where they had to go 90 degrees and turn and go. And what I determined was, they could do the problem, they didn't know what, you know, 90 degrees counterclockwise was. And so they're going the wrong way. But that's by looking around, I remember the teacher going, "They don't know counterclockwise and clockwise, they're going the wrong way." And so they were coming up with different, so it was just, it kind of changed that lesson for the day, not into, "Hey, do you know how to get from point A to point B?" To now, "Hey, let's look at the clock and understand what clockwise and counterclockwise is." So it was interesting just to see that, you stand in the middle of the classroom. You look at the, the second toolkit, now you get into, really, as you look the top-left, this was called a vertical, sorry, a huddle to give vertical directions, to really talk about the lesson, talk about the activity. So instead of having at their seats, and when you're trying to talk to them, tell them, "Hey, this is what you're about to do in a few minutes", it's, "Hey, everyone come up and come over here. All right, I have the activity up on the board here. Let's talk about the activity, let me get your questions out of the way, and then I can get you all into your groups to go work on the activity themselves." So this is another strategy in the book where it's called a group huddle. And it brings them all together to really initiate the activity. And the other part, they talk about, learning always doesn't have to happen in the begin, in the front of the classroom, where the teacher stands all the time. Learning can happen anywhere. So it's called defronting the classroom. It allows, really, the students to go work around. And then the bottom is one of the teachers, really working with a group here and using those thinking questions, like, "Show me how you did this. Explain to me your thought process here. And, you know, tell me what do you think about this part of it." So it allows them to, you know, respond to the teacher and talk about what they're doing and their strategies and their thoughts as they're working on that activity. The next toolkit's the 3rd and 4th, now get into assessing the whole group and understanding if they really understood the concept themselves. So the, the third part, if you look at the picture, is this is a teacher, it's called a consolidation. So as he walks around, he observes the different strategies that are, that the kids are doing and the work they're doing, or if they're, you know, hitting a detour or a problem, that he now at the end, he'll tap on a few of the groups and say, "All right, talk about your thought process here, talk about..." So they would talk to the whole class, and they would talk about how their, their strategy was to come up with that solution to that problem. And then ultimately, you got to understand that the kids do individually understand the concept. Because, you know, in a group, you know, sometimes one's louder than the other and one... So at the end, you have these IM cooldowns, which is more the form of assessment for the, each individual student to really see, "Hey, did they understand the concept? Or does more intervention need to take place based on that data?"
At the elementary level, we've been working with a lot of teachers to connect some of the IM problems that are provided, to connect those problems to Building Thinking Classroom's practices. So one of the practices that has been most beneficial for the elementary level is called thin slicing. It's just a very fancy way of saying differentiating, allowing students to work at a pace that makes sense for them. It starts with a task that is very basic or mild. And so what you're seeing here are problems where no decomposing is needed or no regrouping is necessary. As it gets a little bit spicier, you start to see that the numbers have increased and also that students would need to decompose to solve, depending on the strategy that they use. As it gets even spicier, you'll see that there are subtraction across zeros. And then finally, for the spiciest, you have students who are then building upon their knowledge from mild all the way to spicy, using and practicing those strategies to the point where they can then do a two-step word problem that involves decomposing to subtract. So this is just an example of using how IM really connects beautifully to the Building Thinking Classroom's practices.
So the connection, and this is what we talked about the whole time, but the words that jump out to me are like putting students at the center, a more deep understanding of the mathematics, not just what the skill is, but really a conceptual understanding of the math, more active involvement in the classroom for the students, you know, having them explain their thoughts, having them, you know, collaborate and work with other students and come up with a, a solution based on the collaboration of the, of the group. And then sharing those, those strategies with everyone so that all the students can see. So we made a, a quick video here, well, it shows you from the elementary school through the middle school to the high school of just, you know, in the lower grades, K8, IM, and then the high school, IM, or the Building Thinking Classroom examples.
Joe, can I pause it from the clicker or no? So that was just an example of students working together. And what was cool about it was the, the, one of the students said, "Huh, do you know what? There's 11 10s here." And just recognizing that something was needing to be done in the 10's place because there was too many. And that's not something that the teacher directed them to say. They came up with that based on, given a thinking task, they were able to actually use their thinking skills and collaborate and work together and figure that out. So that's an example of the synthesis piece. So this is after the students were working at, working in partnerships. They came together at the front and basically explained the entire structure of the standard algorithm for subtraction, without the teacher ever having to explain step-by-step what it was. The kids were able to determine it. And this is 3rd grade. So what you just saw there was a warm-up routine. Again, the teacher isn't even present in the video. The kids are talking to each other the entire time, having discourse with mathematical language. There was a student there that was in, in one part of the classroom, and he completely changed his mind after hearing what that group had to say. And he was like, he jumped ship and he went with the other group. And honestly, like, that's what we want. We want kids to be sharing their ideas and really thinking about what others are saying, and then making decisions based off of, of the evidence that kids are giving each other. And so that was just an example of that.
You said you cut this to 2 minutes, I still need 3 minutes.
I did my best.
I've got the 45 seconds at the end.
He had, he had to add his in there. That was an example of centers, and that was a Kindererden classroom. Again, you're seeing that they're, not only are they doing the math, but they're also learning to take turns, they're learning to talk with each other and practice routines, and they clearly knew exactly what to do. During this is actually students doing the thin slicing that you saw, the mild, medium, spicy. Those are students working on completely different problems. So again, you just saw that a student was supporting another student in, in their learning, saying, "What are you going to do here?" And then here is another example of synthesis or consolidation with, with board work, vertical spaces, where you see a teacher who is showing an, the same answer but two different representations. And so he's kind of talking with the group about, you know, what those two representations really mean.
So here is a middle school example. The students are working in different groups, having the conversations. The teacher is working with one group to kind of, you know, get an idea of their thoughts. But you see they're using the whole room, using the whole boards. We actually use Windows too, because the whiteboard, the whiteboard market worker created the Windows as well, just to give them more space to, to move around and work on the problems. And then here's a high school using it as a review for an assessment, where the teacher, which I liked, is looking around the room, I don't know if you see it, but she's looking around the room and seeing the students' work, and in her mind, making the decision about, "All right, am I comfortable that they know what they're doing? Or do I need to go through one more example with them?" So she's using that time to really get an idea of where they are as they're getting ready for the assessment.
If you notice from the video, these kids don't even really realize that someone's recording. They're, they're so engaged in what they're doing. And I think that's the biggest difference when you think back to the beginning of our presentation, that, that image of what a, what a classroom is supposed to look like with a chalkboard up at the front and, you know, all the kids sitting nicely in rows. What you're going to see, and we invite you to come in at any, any grade level, come in and see IM in action, come in and see some of our Building Thinking Classroom practices in action. We'd love to have you in to really experience what it's like, because it's a, it's a totally different world than, than the picture that we saw at the beginning.
And where are we in terms of IM implementation?
So at the elementary level, last year, every teacher implemented two units. This year, we are full in on IM. So we are doing IM with integrity all the way through this year.
And in the middle school, a year or two. We started, well, 8th grade started two years ago piloting it. Last year, 6th or 8th was in, in their first run-through from Unit 1 to Unit 8, and then this year, a year or two.
Any questions? Thank you very much. A lot different than, yes, when we were in the classroom. This is great.
I just had a question, like, what other districts are using this in the area?
Funny you should ask.
I have, I mean, I have a list of the ones they're using. So Wilton and Weston, and it's, there's two lists I have. One of, I know that they're using them, others that are... I, I talked to my IM trainer who came in a month ago and said, "Hey, you know, do you have an idea of what districts are also using it?" And she sent me a list of, she does like an IM consortium. And so I have a list of those districts are also going to her IM consortium. So it's not a complete list, but it's at least a good idea of whatever. So Wilton and Weston are the, are two of them. Madison, Brookfield, Shelton, us, Region 15.
Norwalk.
Norwalk, South Windsor, what other ones jump out? Granby, so those are the Dirk A, Dirk B. I have 78 total school systems through all the Dirks that are using it right now. In terms of Building Thinking Classrooms, I know Wilton brought in the actual author for their PD in the beginning of the year and using it as a consult throughout the year. But it seems like, as we talk to different schools, that that's the thing that a lot of the schools are bringing in now as well as the strategies from Building Thinking Classroom.
I think a lot of the rest have brought him in too, and had professional development with him.
My only question is, like, the fundamentals of this aren't exclusive to math. Right? So the level of engagement and the participation, the collaboration, all the skills that you learn from that, are we implementing this with other subjects and/or all?
Absolutely, and it's really, it goes back to inquiry in the classroom. And it's funny, we've been talking about this interdisciplinarily, if that's a word, I might just made it up, but, about, you know, Building Thinking Classrooms in the social studies, Building Thinking Classrooms in science. And science kind of generally lends itself to that. But you're absolutely right, and it is. It's, this is what we want to see when we go into classrooms. No longer do you want to see the teacher up there talking and talking and talking and whatnot. You want to see kids in productive discourse with each other.
I just want to add, last year, there's a group that brought together for humanities, for Building Thinking Classroom for Humanities. There's no book for that, but they sort of use those concepts. And I know Lenny and Kim Nellie went from the humanities to Madison for a one-day. And in February, I think all the ILS and myself are going for two days in Fairfield. And it's about, it's about Building Thinking Classrooms as far as instructional leadership and how we use BTC across the board. So absolutely, I mean, these were just incredibly valuable strategies for everybody.
And then that takes us to classroom design, right? Furniture, everything else that we're looking at.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Yeah, last year when we, last year, you know, we bought some classroom furniture for Stephanie with the new classrooms and whatnot. We did that, we bought some very flexibly designed furniture that, you know, can easily move in and out to make groups and whatnot.
And you could turn, and all the desks are running surfaces. Like, you could do all this work, gather kids around. That's awesome.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Alrighty, we shall move on to unfinished business. And up first is the second review with a vote anticipated on the field trip to France. Any discussion at all prior to a motion on that? No? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the spring break, April 11th to 19th, 2026, to France as presented at our last meeting? Have a motion, Greg, a second, Christine? Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. We'll move on to policies, second review with a vote anticipated. There's three policies, and I understand that there were some updates in green?
Yes.
To update a couple of legal issues, correct?
Yes, so the first one is, as we go through the 4,000 series, we updated this policy back in October. And CAVE just added more protective classes to their list, so we just updated them, and they're in green.
Yeah, I saw those, they were in the packet, yep.
So that's the only policy, I mean, that's the only update to that policy.
Since our, our first review.
Since we approved it in October. The second is just the fingerprints that we discussed at the last meeting. It's updated again to, due to new requirements from the criminal justice system, information services, I mean. And then the last one is the surveys of students updated legal notation. So it's required to update by CAVE. The policy was fine, it was just updating the legal references.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve policies 4111.1, 4211.1, 4112.5, and 4211.2? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve policies 4111.1, 4211.1, 4112.5, and 4212.5, and 6162.51 as presented at last meeting and tonight's meeting? Jerry, seconded by Chrissy. Any further discussion?
Dave, can I just ask?
Yes.
To playing off of Christine shared about that green that was put into the policy and I brought the policy back to Policy Committee tonight as unfinished business. We do support all of our protected classes in Monroe. You know, we do that through a variety of policies, it's listed in many. It was absolutely not done on purpose that those ones were left out of tonight's policy. As Christine mentioned, we're going through the 4,000 series and CAVE is in the process with the Title IX changes to update the different discrimination policies. So the changes that were added in, in green were, you know, unintentionally.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Missed out from our protected classes, but we just want to make sure it's clear that we do, you know, recognize and respond to treating all of our protected classes appropriately.
Yep, yep.
Well, I think we all looked at it and none of us caught it, right?
Exactly.
We added the language.
Right.
No, we want to, correct, we want to be in, you know, full compliance with the law. I'm aware of that. And I actually have something for you in, on the, on the 4,000 series about a legal update. Yeah, so, so we'll, I'll mention that to you. But yeah, it's constantly changing, that's what happens.
There's some even that I'm looking at it saying, oh, yeah, how did I miss that?
Yeah.
So I like the way they reworded some of them as well.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call the vote, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Motion passes. Moving on to curriculum, second review with a vote anticipated. We have number one, the AP Psychology textbook. Can I have a motion to approve the new textbook for AP Psychology as presented at our last board meeting? Alan, seconded by Christine. Any further discussion?
The only comment I would add is just making sure that we, if, I know Steve said it's a popular course, it's just, I just want to make sure we have enough books and we're not doing this again. That's a lot.
Anything further? Can I, I did that already, right? Okay, we have a first and a second, sorry, we're doing so many. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, passes, thank you very much. Number two, new course, environmental chemistry and materials. Can I have a motion to approve the new course, environmental chemistry and materials as presented at our last board meeting? Greg, seconded by Christine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, again, motion passes, thank you very much. Moving on to new business, we have none. So Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn, sorry.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Stevens. Can I have a second? By Greg. Any further discussion? Good night, everybody. Our next meeting is 1216, all in favor? Unanimous, shocker. Good night, everybody.